Call the meeting to order. First order of on the agenda is the salute to the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item is approval of the agenda.
I make a motion we accept the agenda as written.
Second, all in favor.
Aye.
Approval of minutes at the last meeting.
I make a motion we approve the minutes at the last meeting as written.
Second, all in favor.
Aye.
Signing of our warrants. Okay, excellent. Under old business, we have the Acton Shapley Youth Conservation Corps donation. And we have just signed the warrant to release $11,000 to the Acton Shapley Youth Conservation Corps this week. And then we will be meeting with their treasurer in the next couple of weeks to discuss what they need to tide themselves over for the rest of the summer and what sort of compromise we can work together on that. Is that?
Yep.
And much appreciated for the work you guys do.
We would have done, we would have done more if we could have, but we've met with the accountants this weekend, they're not quite done yet, and they couldn't, they couldn't tell us, they told us not to spend more than that right now as far as cash flow went, so. Okay.
Okay. First item of new business is we have the first of a series of informational presentations on the proposed changes to the comprehensive plan, or rather, to the zoning ordinance based on the comprehensive plan for this November. So either Jamie or Tom.
This morning, I'm not going to hide behind the lectern quite yet.
Would you please introduce yourself, Mr. Cashin?
I will try. My name is Tom Cashin. I'm the chair of the Complan Committee. And this morning, I got out of bed and nearly fell on my face because of some swimmer's ear. And my wife said, "You should have your head examined today, Mr. Cashin." So I went down and got about a quart of gray matter removed from my head. And, but it didn't come out both sides, just the side he was working on. So you'll have to extend me a little slack today. I'm dizzy as hell as I stand here. I'd like to thank our secretary, Anna Williams, and our members, Virginia DeBoer, John Moore, Roy Trafton, Rob Meyer, Greg Martin, and former members, in the recent past, Elise Miller and Larissa Crockett. And I'd like to introduce Jamie Omen Saltmarsh, our senior planning consultant from Southern Main Regional Planning, who's here tonight to help us with section one, a brief intro to the work that the committee has been doing. We wanted to explain to you over the course of the summer, segments of this in bite-sized pieces so that you can understand what we're proposing to you, hopefully that will come to a vote in November 2010. We started the work in 2005 with the passage of the Complan, which was the blueprint that the town had adopted for future growth of the town. And in 2008, the town meeting supported an initial zoning ordinance amendment, which laid out the zoning districts. And hopefully this November, we'll wrap up our work with the shoreline zoning amendments that will incorporate state mandates with committee recommendations for better protection of our great ponds and related water resources. All of the documents that we'll be talking about tonight and over the course of the summer, I think our next meeting is on August 12th with you folks, if that's a Tuesday. I think it is.
August, you mean Thursday, Tom?
Thursday, excuse me, yeah.
It is August 12th.
Is that one of our scheduled meetings?
It is.
So all the related documents that we'll be discussing tonight, that form the body of the work here, are on the town's website. And the substantive one is entitled, "Acton Zoning Ordinance with Amendments Final Draft 4510." And the other one from which we worked as our blueprint was the State of Maine Guidelines for Municipal Shoreland Zoning Ordinances. This document, the town adopted this past June at town meeting, as mandated. And we're hoping to share with you some proposals that we feel strengthen some of the mandates in the state shoreline zoning document, to better protect our lakes, that we'll be proposing to you over the course of the summer. Why did we bother to do this? Census growth figures show from 1970 to 2000, the 2010 numbers aren't out yet, but from 1970, we had a population of 697, according to the government. In 2000, we had a population of 2,145. Acton is a growing community. You can't see it all the time. It's on our little byways and small streets, but we're growing. I would estimate that the 2010 census, I don't know if anybody's got that figure, but it's probably going to be up around 2,450. So you could safely say we've grown threefold in 40 years. That's a strong growth rate, second only to the town of Lebanon in York County. More people equal more residences, obviously, in all zoning districts, but particularly in the shoreline zone, they have most impact. Fifty or 100 years ago, we probably didn't need to consider a lot of the points that we'll be discussing with you, because we were fewer in number, there were fewer vegetated surfaces, excuse me, more vegetated surfaces and buffers, the landscape was more permeable, we had fewer septic tanks and lawns. With growth in the shoreline zone came greater impacts to lake water quality, with more impervious surfaces, roads and driveways and roofs, less natural vegetated buffers, and more lawns and leach fields. Record-keeping by the good work of the lake associations, over almost 30 years now, I think some of the lakes have been monitoring this, on water quality data, have shown that our great ponds have shown a gradual decline in quality, as measured in visibility, dissolved oxygen, and phosphate levels. Phosphate is the main culprit in pollution of our lakes, because it causes algae blooms, and occurs every time we have an event like what we had last night. I imagine stormwater management has been on a few people's minds the past few evenings. We recently had in the town of Acton, a case study of Mousam Lake being on a lake at risk list categorized by the state DEP. And over several years, with federal, state, and local, and nonprofit agency monies totaling almost $750,000, this condition on Mousam was improved. But obviously, we cannot afford to act as before and allow those kind of conditions of deteriorating water quality to occur. We need to have the means financially to fix that, those monies have all dried up. And we need basically to do a better job, our resources demand that of us, and our future demands of us. And it's, as the base of our property valuation, we as a healthy, viable community, need to be more vigilant about lake water quality. It's an interesting question to ask, if we were to plan the shoreline zone again, would we choose to replicate what we have now? And I would wager to a person that probably the answer would be no. But that's the reality that we have to work with. I would suggest that we have overdeveloped the shoreline zone, and probably exceeded the natural systems' ability to sustain themselves without ongoing human intervention. And so this is why we're together tonight, we need to prepare for our community's future together, so that we can continue to enjoy this place, as it is now and as it can be in the future, if we're diligent about what we're doing. The first section I want to review with you, with Jamie's good help, I hope, is section one, and this document that I introduced to you earlier, pertaining largely with nonconforming lots and uses. And the overriding thing that we have to remember in section one is that nonconforming uses are basically the tool by which the zoning ordinance enables grandfathered lots to still remain of value and in use to the owners that have them. There are lots that by statute would not conform to existing zoning, as implemented from 1974 onwards. And there's, the predominance of those is in the shoreline zone around our lakes. That's why you see so many undersized lots of record, obviously. This is not new information, I don't think to anybody, but. So this section lays out the rules and regulations whereby property owners who own these grandfathered lots can maintain them and still derive value from them and use from them, and even expand on their buildings in those lots within the mandates of the state and some stipulations that the town had thought was important to plug in. So Jamie, I'm gonna, if I may, toss the ball to you a little bit here, and we can go back and forth a little bit on pieces of this. Thank you, folks. Try not to walk away as a lectern.
Jamie Omen Saltmarsh, Southern Main Regional Planning Commission, good evening. As Tom said, I'm here to address the changes to the zoning ordinance that have to do with the shore, the shoreline zoning. There were a lot of changes, if you go through this document, there's the zoning ordinance or the land use ordinance, there's a lot of changes in there that just have to do with the land use in general, and then there are a lot of changes that have to do specifically with those areas in the shoreline zoning districts. And why we're coming before you, I'm not sure if Tom mentioned that, I didn't hear it at the beginning, is that DEP has recently updated their shoreline zoning rules, and it's the first time they've done so in 10 years. So that's one of the reasons why there are some changes. There are some changes here that are mandated by DEP, so the committee has taken the time to update your language and your land use zoning to reflect that. And then the committee spent about a year talking about little additional tweaks, I guess, that were optional, and that the committee felt were advantageous, I guess, to this town, because of all the water bodies. And the changes that they've made above and beyond DEP are those specifically designed to help improve and maintain the good water quality that you've achieved in this town. So that's what these are all about. So just to get down to specifics, I'm not going to go over every little underline, because there are a lot of them that DEP are just a lot of cleanup things, just to clarify, they don't really affect the land use so much, it really almost helps the code officer and everyone to understand the codes a little better. So that, I'm not going to go through every little underline with you, so we've just, I'm going to highlight just a couple of the changes, just in this nonconforming section. So what we're talking about is nonconforming lots, meaning lots that might be too small and don't meet the minimum lot size, or they could be lots that meet the minimum lot size, but the homes are too close to the water. They're beyond, they're too close to the water, they're inside the shoreline district, so they do not meet setback requirements. So there's a couple different things, it could be vacant lots or built lots. Now, just, there's only about two or three significant changes in this section, 1.4, 1.7, 1. You'll see a couple underlines there, but the main change in that particular paragraph is that in order for a vacant, nonconforming lot of record to be allowed to be built on, it has to meet, it has to meet, at least meet road and shore frontage, those were always in the code. The one that we've, that the committee added, is that it also must meet lot width. So you have a nonconforming lot, vacant, it is too small, it does not meet minimum lot size, but it's got to meet road and shore frontage, there's a specific frontage along the shoreline that it's got to be, and then lot width, that would be on the roadside. So that's just a new one that's added in there. So a lot of skinny lots now, it's got to be a sizable road, a lot with road frontage. And that's in the Resource Protection and Shoreland Districts. So that's one of the first more significant changes.
These are the changes that the town, not the state makes, so that's correct? Are you giving the ones, just the town ones, or changing the other state?
No, this is just changes in general, and the committee went through the process of picking out the town ones versus what was required by DEP. And quite frankly, I don't remember the difference between all of those, but the committee has that information.
We'll go over that point later, Bill, if I may, Mr. Chairman.
Yep.
The substantive points of the-
Tom, can you come up to the podium, please, to answer?
The substantive points of change that the committee made, made, were not involved in section one. And just another point of clarification, that those are the exceptions for consideration, so that you have to meet all provisions except lot size, road, and shore frontage, and lot width.
Oh, oh, okay. You're right. I have to read this like 10 times, and we probably changed this about a year ago, so you're absolutely right. I'm sorry about that and the confusion.
Okay, so Jamie, can we back up for a minute?
So, scratch all that.
So if you have a vacant lot-
Yes, and it's the opposite of what I said.
Okay.
Yes.
So you still can build one?
If you don't meet lot size, and if you don't meet road and shore frontage, and you don't meet lot, and you don't need to meet lot width. But you have to meet all the other provisions.
So that means, so, the other provisions would be things like surf, area, percentage of the area of the lot that can be covered, would be another provision. So I believe that we allow 20% coverage on a lot. So you, if you have a half acre lot in the shoreline zone, we're going to let you not have the frontage that you would normally need, not have the shoreline you'd normally need, not have the lot width you'd normally need, but you still can't cover more than 20% of it with impermeable surface.
And if you build, you'd still have to meet setback requirements as well.
Right, and you'd-
So those would apply.
Which are smaller in the shoreline zone than they are in the-
Side and rear setbacks. Sorry about that. Let's see, we worked on this about like a year and a half ago, so some of this stuff, I've had to kind of relearn, because we really worked on this a long time ago. All right, 1472, actually, I'm going to hand back to you, Tom, because I want you to explain that one.
Yes, you can, okay. Basically, this deals with contiguous lots of record in the shoreline zone. And there's a provision inserted by the state that says that, in a nutshell, if you have a lot that is, can be served by public sewer, or can accommodate a disposal system that conforms to state statutes, you may build on the lot, with two other criteria being met. You need 100 feet of shore frontage and a lot area of a half acre, 20,000 square feet, plus or minus. So again, we didn't, we didn't feel it was the proper time to get into the detail of this business tonight, we wanted to just introduce this to you, spur some interest in seeking out the document. And at a later time in the summer or early fall, we're going to have a number of meetings that will kind of gather all this stuff together, and there'll be much more time, the meat and potatoes of the meeting will be question and answer format, but we didn't want to take up the selectmen's time with that, in these smaller meetings.
One more fair, significant change is 14117, that has to do with expansion of structures in the shoreline and resource protection zones. In the shoreline district, when I talk about shoreline district, those are areas, without taking all the time to explain, the shoreline district, that is the least restrictive district, and that's where residential homes are still allowed in the shoreline zone. Then there's the resource protection district, and those are real specific areas with steep slopes, around wetlands and different things, set up by DEP, where residential homes are not allowed. So there's two different districts. In the shoreline district, that is the least restrictive district, you're allowed to expand your structure, the existing structure, by 30% over the lifetime of, you know, of the structure. Once you do 30%, that's it. But you are allowed to expand. You cannot expand and make it more nonconforming, for instance, I give you two examples, if your home is within the 75-foot setback, it does not meet shoreline setback distances, and you want to expand by 30%, you cannot add a porch onto that nonconforming part that is within the shoreline district. So if you want to add a porch that looks onto the water, and your building is already nonconforming, it doesn't meet setbacks, that would not be allowed. However, you could expand sideways. So you just can't go further, you can't go further into the setback if you're nonconforming. And the same thing, if you are in the shoreline district, and you're beyond the setbacks, then you can go, you know, you can bring it up to that setback line, basically. So in the shoreline district, 30% expansion is allowed. In the resource protection district, and there's not a lot of resource protection areas, you can see it on the map, there are some areas that are in resource protection that are restricted. If your home is in a resource protection district, you can't make the use nonconforming, and residential uses are no longer, are not allowed in resource protection, therefore you can't expand. So in resource protection districts, 30% expansion does not apply.
Is that one of the states?
That is, the fact that it's not allowed in resource protection districts is one that was chosen by the, by the committee, because it was optional. And I'll, I'll tell you why, because resource protection districts, residential homes can be built under very certain exceptions, and the committee chose to keep those out, keep out those exceptions as well. Basically, the resource protection areas are though, are the most vulnerable, they're the most important to protect, and they're most vulnerable to erosion and things like that. It's in, it's in the shoreline zone, in the flood plain, in the shoreline zone with steep slopes, around significant wetlands. So there's certain areas that the state has deemed valuable, from a environmental standpoint.
There was a trade-off, though, that we made, if you would explain that.
Can you come up here so I can hear you on the microphone?
That was a-
Okay, I'll try to explain the exception, and, and I had a beautiful map, but today, or last night, I had a down tree on a down wire in my driveway, I have no car to use, I'm using my father-in-law's SMR PC, had a down tree with a down wire, they've been offline all day today, so I haven't. I created a beautiful map with an ortho photo and a very easy way to explain what I'm about to explain, but I was not able to print that out. So I will do my best, and if you need to, I can bring an illustration at the next meeting. There's, this is an optional thing in shoreline zoning in DEP. And let's say there's an area, in fact, there's one, the one I got picked out was on Chipmunk Street or something, Chipmunk Road, somewhere in here, where the area is an area of steep slopes. And that puts it in resource protection, where residential homes will not be allowed. However, there's about 10, at least 10 homes, that are side by side, right along the road frontage, or right along the shore. So one of the options that the committee chose, and this is where they made it more lenient, is that DEP allows that in resource protection districts, if you have homes side by side, at least two or more homes within 500 feet, but they have to have a total of at least 1,000 foot of shore frontage, you can take that whole area and say, "Okay, this is pretty developed, let's keep it in shoreline district. Let's keep, let's not really make them all nonconforming," basically, "let's not make all picking houses nonconforming, let's at least leave them in shoreline district, and sort of the damage has been done." So those homes would be allowed to expand by 30% and that kind of thing. So that was a bit of a trade-off, I guess, the committee said, "All right, if there's areas where it is developed, let's go ahead and leave them as limited residential." And that was a choice that the town can go either way on that. And that affected several different areas, and we looked at that by looking at aerial photos and really looking at those areas. If there's just a single home here, and here, and you know, here, and they're not close enough together, those homes are in resource protection. So, and I will say very quickly about resource protection, the resource protection requirements did not change in this latest draft of DEP. They are the exact same ones, there are no changes. The only difference is, we're able to map them a lot better. So maybe there were some steep slope areas and different areas where it really wasn't apparent to the code officer or anyone that those probably shouldn't have, had been built on. So now we're able to map them. So really, if your home's now in resource protection district, and it wasn't before, it really was, it was just not mapped.
And Jamie, can you, as far as what is resource protection district and what is not, is that a DEP decision, or is that a town decision?
Uh, no, that's definitely a DEP decision. DEP sets the parameters, they have decided what they feel is significant to preserve water quality, and they have designated places to be in resource protection, limited, you can build like a structure, but not a home, maybe there's a storage shed or something. There are some little, few things that might be allowed there that have to do with forest management, or, you know, utilities or something. But no, those are, those are set by DEP, and we have to at least follow those, and that's what you'll see on the map.
We had, had earlier a discussion-
Can you come up to the mic? Because they can't hear on the camera unless you're speaking in the mic.
Bill, again, we had previously had a discussion about 13th Street, that the houses are up on the hill and didn't show up in the shoreline, are they still in that area that couldn't be expanded?
You could look quickly if it's not, if it's not a no, it can be expanded, because we had that discussion, we're going to look at 13th.
Down on the lower right, Jamie.
This one, is this 13th Street? Are those yellow ones, the ones that couldn't be expanded?
Yes.
The houses that are 500 feet down?
Right.
We had that discussion before. This is the stuff that people need to know, is what's been changed locally, that affects the local citizens, is not the state.
People won't know unless you're talking to the microphone, because the microphone's hooked to the camera.
Those houses along that area of 13th Street, there's more than one every 500 feet.
And you know, you know why? I believe, and I can verify pretty darn quickly, it does not meet the, I don't believe it meets the 1,000-foot distance of shore of frontage.
There's homes on 13th Street, all along the street, there's 162 people.
There's only a portion that's in a steep slope, and we looked at that, and the committee deter, you know, it's got to have 1,000 feet of shore frontage.
It's much longer now than we would have.
But the other, the other part of it is already in shoreline district, there's only a portion of it, a small- There's only a portion of it, a small portion of it, that's in resource protection.
And my, and that resource protection is designated by the state, not by the town?
Right, and that's in a state, that's in a steep slope area, and that steep slope area is not for a distance of a thousand feet, it's under.
I think they probably have to come out and look at it, but we had talked about it before and nothing was done about it.
Well, it's because it doesn't meet the, the other standard. I understand there's houses, but it's got to be for a distance of a thousand feet, and it doesn't extend a thousand feet. There are homes one after another, but they're, they're probably only within six or seven hundred feet. It's not a thousand feet of shore frontage.
It's half a mile.
Well, and the other portion is already in shoreland district. It's only that little bit that has the steep slope of two or more acres. The rest of it's already shoreland district. It's only that piece, and it's not a thousand feet.
Jamie, is there a recourse for landowners with the DEP if they feel that their property has been labeled resource protection incorrectly?
Uh, yes, so far DEP has done a draft review. I would say that we could probably send them that area, and we could say, this is the committee's position of why we don't, of why we don't feel that that it should stay resource protection, because it doesn't meet your parameters, and DEP, we, we can get a determination. That has happened in a couple instances in some other towns having to do with wetland areas and stuff. There's been some specific areas, so we could do that.
Okay. All right, and we can, so we'll see the comprehensive plan again on August 12th for another small section?
It's not the comprehensive plan.
Plan implementation committee.
Yeah.
Right, yes.
Yes.
Okay. And you will be holding public hearings as well throughout this, sometime coming up here in the next couple of months. Tom, can you come to the microphone?
I think that in, I mean, we're hoping to do this short intro kind of a format for quite a body of work, and it will probably take four to five board of selectmen's meetings to do that. And thereafter, sometime in, it will have to be early to mid-September, we'd have some wrap-up meetings, I would think, one or two, two, and more.
And you'll have a public hearing in that time?
Yes.
Okay.
We have had our legal public hearing already on this. This, just so everybody's clear on this, this language is not subject to any more amendment. We are, we are going forward to the voters with, with what is in this document, except for typos, et cetera. And Lorraine's already found a few of those.
Does your committee have an email address here at the town?
To be honest, I don't, no.
Could you, could you maybe set that up and have people be able to email questions in, and then maybe you could answer a few of those questions at each of the meetings that you meet with us?
What I suggest we do, Ted, is that we would handle that in our culminating meetings.
After you're done with the selectment meetings.
Yeah, because we can get bogged down in, in picky un little points on this, which will take up too much time for everybody.
But why don't, if I speak to Jennifer, we can do that easily, we did that with the sign. We can set up an email that could say something like zoning@actinmaine.org. People could email any questions they have, and then we would have a, I think it's a great idea, have a full set of questions, so that when you do have a public hearing, and I'm lobbying for more than one.
Yeah.
Okay? Then you would have those questions in hand. You would have had time to look at the questions beforehand, because with something as complex as zoning, questions on the spot are not easily answered, because you're going, if you have to give an answer quickly, it's very likely going to be the wrong answer, and it's best to have the answer from Ken Paul's input as well, because he's the one who would actually be able to give a permit, and that's usually what people's questions are regarding.
Yeah.
So if you had the questions ahead of time, the comprehensive plan implementation committee could look at them, Ken Paul could look at them, and then the answers could be given in a very thoughtful and full way.
Yeah.
So I will talk to Jennifer about that tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Again, just to close here, all of these documents are available online, and I think either Lorraine or Jen has copies, hard copies, and more can be, can be made, I guess.
And there are also copies that are color-coded to show people very clearly what is mandated language from the state and what are suggestions from the town, and...
That only pertains, though, if I may, to Section 5. We did not have the time after being asked to do that, to go through the whole document.
And Section 5 is what part?
Performance standards. Which, again, is a kind of a picky un section that covers a lot of different conditions in a lot of different districts, and it was one of the more contentious areas of discussion, and that's why we chose it as, as the place to do that one. Yeah, that copy is available, and it would clarify some of the substantive changes that the, not changes, but further provisions for protection of lake water qualities, the way I would characterize it, that the committee recommended the voters consider above and beyond the state mandates. But again, we can go through those later date. It's quite simple, and I think they're rational choices. Okay?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, folks.
Okay, next, we announced last week that we'd be interviewing treasurers on Monday and Tuesday, and we have done so, and we have offered the position to Michelle Rumney, and she has accepted. She has been a deputy treasurer here at the town for about a year? No, I'm being said no. Okay, well, ten months, and nine or ten months, and she is also the treasurer for the town of Shapley. So by reducing the position here to a twenty to twenty-five hour a week position, and she is able to accept that as a, and that's how we advertised it, she will be able to do both towns.
Do I have to make a motion to hire her first and then this afterwards?
No, we have already hired her. We just have to make the appointment.
All right, I make a motion. The selectmen of municipality of Acton do in accordance with the provisions of the laws of the state of Maine hereby appoint you as treasurer and CFO within and for the municipality of Acton until June 30th, 2013, and this is to Michelle Rumney.
And it's dated effective August 1. I'll second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and we have a property on Thirteenth Street to open bids for, and it looks like we've got one bid.
So we're going to sell it. We've tried three times.
Now it's just a question of how much we're going to get for it. Third time's the charm, Lorraine. Okay, from Mr. Mark J. Evans, we have a bid for the parcel of land located on Thirteenth Street, tax map 143 lot 20, is $320. Excellent. Enclosed is my cash bid deposit of $65, so that qualifies as our, it's even a dollar more than we needed, so that's great. We needed a twenty percent deposit, and we got 65 instead of 64. So entertain a motion to...
What's his name?
His name is Mark J. Evans.
I make a motion, reset the bid of Mark J. Evans for the parcel located on Thirteenth Street, tax map 143, lot 20, for $320.
I will second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Excellent, one more off, and back on the tax rolls, that's fantastic. Do we know if Mark J. Evans is an owner there already?
Never heard of him.
Never heard of, well, maybe you're going to have a new neighbor.
Jack is from Gloucester, Mass. Gloucester, Mass? You want to make Philly hit on an assessment for the road?
Welcome to Acton Maine. Okay, next on the agenda, agenda is any other business? Does anyone have any other business? Barbara Seeker, please come to the mic.
Barbara Seeker, I have three things. The first one is I want everyone to be sure to note that there will be a candidate's night on August 3rd at 7:00, and at that time you can grill the person that would like to be selectman next. And although there is only one person writing, running, you can have a write-in vote, so make sure you come out for your candidate. The second one is the picnic in the park that will be on the 7th of August, and anybody, anyone, men, women, whatever, can bake a pie for this event and get into the contest.
Thank you, Barbara.
You're welcome. And we'll be closing Sam Page Road about quarter of, what would it be, quarter of one, 12:30, quarter of one, something like that, from, from the corner of the H Road into the park, and then if you go from...
Goose Pond.
Goose Pond Road, go in as far as the Nason Road, and it'll be closed from there down to the park. And the third thing I have to say I'm so excited about, I have for a long time protested the sign at Big Daddy's. So I decided to call him, Mr. Cudworth, yesterday, and I talked to him on the phone, and I talked about the bad sign that's out front. And I said, it's not doing your business any good to have something like that out there, it's very negative. And he didn't have anything to say about it, it was Mr. Hannan's sign, he only had charge of the two signs that, for his property. And I said, well, if you will talk to Mr. Hannan and tell him I would appreciate it that that sign was gone, and within fifteen minutes, that sign was gone. So now we have no more bad sign up there, so I said he could invite Mr. Hannan to the picnic.
Barbara, can you actually stay up for just one more moment? When we had spoken about closing the road, you had said that you were going to speak to the property owners on that road. Did you get a chance to speak to that?
Eric was going to do that, Eric Gallagher.
So we're going to, we are hoping to close the road, but we're going to speak to the property owners...
And it, I hopefully have it in Lorraine's paper, too.
Have you contacted fire and the rescue?
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, not rescue, but the fire department.
Yeah, they need to know.
So we'll, we'll need to speak to those landowners first. If nothing else, we can certainly close down half of it for parking, because that's the concern, right?
Well, we're going to park only on one side of the road, because we can't find anybody wants to shuffle this overflow crowd that's going to be there to, from town hall. So we're going to close the road and they can drive down there.
But we're going to talk to the landowners first?
Yes.
Yes.
Nancy, Nancy already knows it.
We will be speaking to you formally, or Eric Gallagher will be.
I'll be selling some cookies.
Or giving it away, depending on how bad it is. Mr. Long?
That's Dennis Long. Three weeks ago, I asked if you, if the selectman had any idea what the estimated fund balance was, and you said you'd know in three weeks.
Well, our treasurer is rising, our treasurer is rising up, so let's find out.
Sherri Smith, treasurer. We had the accountants in here yesterday and the day before doing the audit, working on all the audit work, and I asked him specifically if they had a fund balance, and he said they would have a rough, rough estimate next week for me.
The other thing is, addressing FEMA, has the town received any funds from FEMA?
Yes, we have received the first...
Notification, right? We didn't receive the funds yet.
The funds that we received were from three years ago.
Oh, so we recently got some funds from FEMA, but there's...
But we got notification that the fire department's funds had been approved, and that money would be forthcoming. I don't know, have you got it, Sherri?
I've not seen it.
No.
When that...
But I got notice that the fire department's submission was accepted.
When you receive the money from, for the fire station, what's going to be done with that money?
From FEMA?
Yes.
His question is, when we receive that money, what will we do with it?
I would expect that it would depend on how the money was spent. If, if it was spent out of a budget line, it seems that it should reimburse that budget line that it was spent out of.
The, the money that we paid the fire station, the fire people, as by the warrant that we vote on every year, it's not taken out of the fire department's budget, it's taken out of the undesignated fund balance. So it was of no cost to the fire department's budget.
So what you're saying is when you have, when you have expenditures on storms, then you use the undesignated fund, you don't charge the fire department's budget for that time?
Right, right.
And so you're saying that the money should go back into the undesignated fund?
Right, that's the way we vote it every year, Ted.
Our treasurer is, is wanting to speak on that.
I paid that out of the, the fire department budget. It was out of one of the fire department accounts when they requested that money.
Well, it shouldn't have been. I can tell you that much, because our warrant we vote on every year says it comes out of the undesignated fund balance. We vote that at a town meeting.
The warrant says that emergency?
Yes, and, and it's set, it states the rates that we pay for the fire and ambulance, and the money comes out of the undesignated fund balance, because normally something like the fire department's budget, stuff like this wouldn't be budgeted.
Right.
So it could very easily be $100,000, $50,000, we never know, and so that's why it was set up for the stuff to be paid out of the undesignated fund balance, so it didn't affect the fire department's operating budget.
Is that the same for the roads, when we paid out of all the regular roads budget?
Nope, fire and rescue.
I'll have to look into it, but all alarms were signed, so I'm not sure.
Well, I'm just saying, this is, this is how it's supposed to be set up.
But it was taken out of the fire department's budget.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Any other business? Anyone? Okay, we have some announcements. First off is, as Barbara Seeker already said, was the picnic at the Mary Grant Nature Preserve on August 7th at 1:00 PM. Candidate's night, or candidate night, on August 3rd at 7:00 PM here at the town hall. There is a one-room schoolhouse reunion sponsored by the Acton-Shapley Historical Society that's going to be at the Lincoln Schoolhouse down on Milton Mills Road on August 8th. And what time is that, Mr. Neal?
No, no.
It's going to be at the Lincoln School?
No.
Thought it was going to the Lincoln School.
The reunion's going to be at the old schoolhouse, Shapley Schoolhouse down at Emery's Mills.
I apologize.
And that's why I appeared to add that I've talked to the selectmen and to the Conservation Committee, or the people who has the responsibility of the Lincoln School, and it's, right now it's planned that the Lincoln School will be open and available that afternoon.
As a destination that people can go and visit as part of the reunion, but not as the host of the reunion. Got it, misunderstood.
So as I say, I volunteer to, you know, bring people up or bring in there, I'll be there to turn around and make sure the place is open, and I'll make sure that it's clean and available. But there has been a number of people that have spoken to me that have been to, you know, went to one of the schools, especially the ones at the Lincoln School, and have asked whether the Lincoln School would be open, so that's why I extended myself to make sure that, see if we could have it open, and we plan to have it open.
Okay, so on, on August 8th at the Emery Mills Schoolhouse, what time is the reunion beginning?
1:00 to 3:00.
1:00 to 3:00, okay. And the Lincoln Schoolhouse will be open during those hours for people to visit if they wish?
Right.
Okay. I was in there the other day, it's, it's certainly a little rough right now, and I believe that the Conservation Committee would welcome any volunteers that wanted to help get that cleaned up and ready. It cert, there have been a number of animals that have been enjoying it as their own personal home, and it, it is a beautiful old building, though, and certainly something for us to be proud of, listening to the Conservation Committee speak about who has taught there and, and the history it represents, it's certainly important to the town. The Owls, the older, wiser, liberated seniors, will have a lunch in this coming Wednesday at noon time here at the town hall. Speaker will be Sue Walsh, she will be discussing dogs, dog training, service dog training, et cetera. And also, thanks to everyone's generosity of going to the transfer station last Saturday for the bottle drive, the Owls were able to deposit $154 towards their bus trip fund for the fall. And coming up on August 7th as well, there will be a lion's breakfast, as there is every first Saturday of the month. first Saturday of the month, from 8:00 till 10:00, and the beneficiary of that this time in August will be the Owls as well. And they will be running a bake sale that morning from 8:00 till noon to help support the cause there, too. Absentee ballots are also available now, I believe, so if people wish to do their democratic duty and joy early, they can, see Ms. Rue for that. Any announcements that you have, Mr. Krazak?
Nope, I'm all set.
Okay, with that-
I make a motion, will you adjourn?
I will second, all in favor?
Aye.